Well, good afternoon, everyone. Pursuant to section five, four, nine, five, six of the California Government Code, a special meeting of the City Council Successor Agency of the City of Brentwood Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency, Brentwood Infrastructure and Financing Authority is hereby called to order for May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at four thirty P M. Looks like we do have all in attendance. Margaret, could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
At this time, if you could join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will open public comments, and I'll turn to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items that are on the consent calendar. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting when you have the opportunity to provide them. I received no written public comments that were submitted to the city clerk prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the City Council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. I do have one hand raised. Just give me a second to share my screen. And I'll call on Ian Cohen. Mister Cohen, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, good evening, Council. I was going to comment this on Tuesday, but all of a sudden, my screen went blank and we suffered a power outage. Well, thank you so much for rescheduling this meeting as quick as possible. Really appreciate your here more of me tonight. But right now, I want to speak as the Youth Commissioner and congratulate the Commissioners you are appointing tonight. Two of them are my friends, and the others I really believe in. I'm sure our Youth Commission Committee that was made up of a Commissioner, our staff and our Parks Recommissioner did an amazing job picking the future leaders of our city. And I just want to say to them, if they're listening right now, you guys have a bright future and are really looking forward to working with you guys for a year until my term is over in the Youth Commission. That's all I wanted to say, as well as your here more of me tonight or this afternoon.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman. Mister Dorman, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And by a show of hands, how many of you thought I was that guy? Which is funny, because I thought I was the only one going to speak tonight. And speaking is what it is that I'd like to talk about. I'm not a student of American history, but I think people misinterpret the First Amendment. In my mind, you're able to speak your mind. You can say whatever you want. It's what you can't control is how I will respond to what you say. The second part of that is you can be in a closet and talk to yourself. I could, I walk around, I talk to myself quite often. It's not the freedom to speak, it's the wanting to be heard. That's the most important part of the First Amendment, to be heard. I bring this up because I brought up Tuesday, the written emails that go in, and yeah, they're put into the system, others can read them. Well, the challenge is, they're not for us to read, they're for you to read. And as I said, I know that I know there's at least one of you who doesn't take the time to read. And that is sad, because people have taken the time to write. And so is it inconvenient for a few of you to listen to Margaret or somebody recite what was said in an email? Well, you guys ran for office, this kind of comes with the job. And if there are people like me who will sit on the phone and wait forty-five minutes to get their three minutes to be heard, then is it that uncomfortable for you and for the other listeners to allow them to be heard, not just to write it down? And that's really it. I hope a future agenda item will be to talk about reading what was written. I'd love to see any of you actually give a reason why it shouldn't be read into the record. And again, I hope that somebody will actually get back to me, because so far, staff hasn't had the best record of getting back to people. So please, agenda item.
Mayor, I think we discussed this once in one of our council meetings, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe we can find the meeting where we reviewed it, and someone can send the link of the conversation to Mister Dorman. Oh, I can't hear you. Sorry.
Thank you. Yes, we need to make sure that happens.
And another thing, is Vice Mayor Margaret Rodriguez on a cellphone while driving and looking at the camera? Which, isn't that a ticketable offense?
I actually have it connected to my car. I'm not on the phone, and I'm not looking at the camera. I'm actually looking at the road, so I'm just listening to the meeting itself.
You've looked down a few times, we've seen you.
Well, if you like, Councilmember, I have it on my car, it's connected, so I actually am driving. I have obligations with my family that I had to attend to, so I want to...
I think the mayor should decide. I mean, we've seen him look down. Anyone else would get a ticket for this, so we need to figure out what we're going to do about this.
Well, at this time, since we are in public comments, I will leave it up to if the Vice Mayor wanted to turn his camera off, so that he wouldn't be tempted to look at the screen, or however he deems is safe until he gets to the place.
That's fine, Mayor, I could, I could take the camera off, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to be part of the meeting. Like I said, my phone is connected to my car while I'm driving, so both our hands are on the wheel, but I could take the video off, that's no problem.
Okay, thank you, that might be helpful. Okay, and we'll go back to public comments. Margaret?
I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
Okay, at this time, then, we will close public comment, and we will move into consent calendar. And do I have a motion regarding the consent items? I know that, I would like to pull consent item A-one. Councilmember Rary has consented to read it. She reads it usually every year, and so, so sure, but, but having said that, if I have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar, or is there any other items that someone would like to pull?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar minus item A-one.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, now, item A-one, a proclamation proclaiming June twenty-two as Pride Month, Councilmember Rary.
Okay, let me find it again. Just a minute. We have proclamation for Pride Month, whereas the City of Brentwood has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning plus community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the City of Brentwood, who contribute to the enrichment of our city, are part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community. And whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of lesbians, gay men, bisexual, transgender, and questioning persons throughout. But there continues to be some, there continues to be some opposition against people from this community and around the world, making it important for cities like Brentwood to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian women, gay men, bisexual people, transgender people, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. Now therefore be proclaimed, the City of Brentwood, the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the City of Brentwood, and invites everyone to reflect on the ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding, inspire equity, create alliances, and celebrate diversity throughout the city dated this twenty-fourth day of May twenty-twenty-two. This is from, as I said earlier, from both the Mayor Jill Bryant and the City Council. Also, if there is anyone out there that is LGBTQ plus, or has friends that are and are not aware that there is a Rainbow Center that helps those from the LGBTQ community in a variety of ways, and they can be found in Concord.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rary. And with that, I move approval for item A-one of the consent calendar.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
We will move into item B, Public Hearings. And item B-one is a continuation to June first, twenty-twenty-two, of a review of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit amendment and design review for the Vineyard Academy Christian School. And Crystal DeCastro will present on this item. Crystal?
Isn't this being continued to June first?
Crystal, we can't hear you, sorry, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. So the request is from staff to continue the item to the June first meeting due to the power outage that we had at the last meeting.
Okay, are there any questions of staff at this time?
I just, the applicant was fine with that?
Yes, the applicant agreed to that date.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, clarifying questions of staff, I will open public comments this time.
I received no written public comments related to the continuance of this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. We do have one speaker, I will go ahead and share my screen. And I'll call on Danny Dorman. Mister Dorman, go ahead.
Great, thank you again. I hope that there'll be a discussion about this for the public. I'm not quite sure why there needs to be a continuance. They should have been ready on Tuesday, unless the power outage did something retroactively. And again, I think the public, it would be nice, and even if the public is just me for my edification, I would really appreciate the time. And speaking of time, I appreciate the link coming my way. I still don't know if that addresses a future agenda item, if this was discussed in the past. Now, as I said, it's just food for thought for people who take the time to write. And speaking of taking the rest of my time, I will take it in silence to fully absorb the minute and fifty-eight seconds I have, and then I will say, "Thank you." Well, actually, I won't eat up the entire time, but I will ask. I asked the question about being able to show things like your folks do when they come up to promote changes in architecture and things like that. I don't know if there's been a response to that. The reason I ask is, as of right now, all I see is the screen. For all I know, the five of you are out taking a lunch break and not even paying attention. When we were in the council chamber, yes, we could see you, we can interact with you. Right now, I'm just interacting with a screen that says May twenty-six, twenty-twenty. So I cede the rest of my time, thank you.
I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
You're on mute.
Thank you. This, this different time's thrown me off. Are we not able to be seen by the community on our page here? Like, I can see all of you?
It is probably a setting in how he's viewing the meeting that he needs to adjust. And if that doesn't work, he can click on the YouTube streaming, and he'll be able to see a different camera view as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure that it can be disconcerting if, if you don't know that we're paying attention. I would love for him to be able to see our faces. All of us are trying to make eye contact with his, his voice. So I just wanted to make sure that. Councilmember Rary?
Yes, just in, in to comment on Mister Dorman. At the last meeting before we adjourned, we were going to continue all the public hearings to this date, but that we would contact the applicant for Vineyard Academy to find out what the best date was for them to come back, because this was something that should have been heard on Tuesday, but now they, they need to make it so that their consultants, so that the applicant himself and everybody else could join the next meeting. So that's why it's being continued again in this meeting to June first, yeah, June first. And I believe the housing element starts off that day at five. Is that correct? Yeah? And then this item will come in after the housing element, so that, that will be when it will be heard. And, and with that, I, I would move to, to continue this item to June first, unless there's...
Can I, can I just break in one moment real quick? To kind of follow up on exactly what you said, I was wondering if Crystal had anything else to add as far as like, what public comment will look like, if people will still have the chance to speak about it on that day, et cetera, et cetera? And if there was anything else about the continuance that would help Mister Dorman to understand?
No, just to add in, as Councilmember Rary, that's correct, the applicant did agree to continue the item. They were ready on May twenty-fourth, but due to the power outage, you know, they had plans, and so June first was the agreed-upon date that they could all attend. And it would just be just like the regular council meeting where the applicant would have ten minutes to speak, and there would be three minutes for each individual from the public at large to speak on the item as well.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. So we do have a first for approval to move. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary? Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Bryant?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, we'll move on to item B-two, pertains to ex, making sure my mic was on, pertains to extending a moratorium on new oil and gas development in the city, and City Manager Tim Ogden will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At your April twelfth City Council meeting, you adopted an interim urgency ordinance to impose a temporary moratorium on any new oil and gas development within the city. And this was to give staff preparation time to analyze and study the subject, and then bring back a comprehensive update to the Brentwood Municipal Code to regulate or prohibit oil and gas activities going forward. The item before you tonight, as anticipated, is that that first moratorium of forty-five days is not going to provide sufficient time. So this urgency ordinance that you would consider giving tonight will extend it for an additional period as per state law, up to ten months and fifteen days. And we don't expect it to take that full time, but we will still need some additional time to come back to you with those proposed amendments to the municipal code and various options, and all of the findings that you would need to consider to do so. And that is your, that is the item for you tonight, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
You're on mute.
I'm just leaving it on. Councilmember Meyer, I'm sorry, were you just waving to let me know that I was?
It's not seven o'clock yet, so you're just not ready to turn that microphone on, right?
That's it. Any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, we will move into public comments. Margaret?
Margaret, are you on mute?
I know sometimes it's contained.
I have two separate buttons, and yes, I did not unmute one, thank you. I received one written public comment that was submitted via email in opposition to this from Lubin Olson, and it was submitted for the May twenty-fourth agenda. And copies will be made available on the city's webpage. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have three hands raised, let me go ahead and share my screen. The first speaker is Rod, followed by Ian Cohen. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. And there you all are. Yeah, Danny was correct that normally we just see the slide about public comments and our rights, and we see the timer, but it seems like Margaret has fixed it already and arranged you guys on the side, so that's really swell. I don't have a lot to say about this, this moratorium, other than that I support it wholeheartedly. We don't need any oil and gas development in the City of Brentwood. We were, we're built out enough to where there's no real safe place where somebody could stick an oil well. And what I really want to do is just get off and let, I think we're going to hear from some people who are in a generation that has to live with this decision for a long time, and I respect them a great deal for having the courage to come and speak up. And so I'm going to stop talking now, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I really can't take credit for the reordering of the windows, maybe our city manager helped me with that. The next speaker is Ian Cohen, followed by Alexi Lindeman. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, good evening again, council and staff. I thank you, Rod, for that comment a second ago. So you guys know I've been here like, what, two times before you asking for a ban on oil and gas drilling. The time is now. There is no place in Brentwood, or honestly, anywhere in our world anymore, for new oil and gas drills. Some people may say, "Oh, it will help with gas prices, oh, it'll help with that." No, it will not. Gas prices are on international market, and an oil well that will endanger the health and safety of, we have done the math, the oil well nine hundred feet from Shadow Lakes on county land, that can affect up to half of Brentwood's population. We did count the houses basically one by one on Google Maps back in March. Like, take a moment, think about that, that is scary. And before tonight, we had no one speak out in a meeting against us until this email came up. But yeah, we have negative article in the newspaper about us, but yet, no one has verbally spoken out against us in these meetings. I really hope that extending this moratorium will help our city attorney and his staff create a really good ban on oil and gas drilling. And Damien, if you're listening, if you need help, feel free to reach out to us. We are here to help you. We're not here to just speak to the council. We're here to help the city, lead us to a better path, to a better future. We have resources that we can connect you with, and we know people in Alameda County, Los Angeles County, who have done amazing stuff to ban oil and gas drilling. And also, we also help with the Aniox oil and gas drill ban, and we're working with the county right now, which the county supervisor, John Goya, recently sent a sustainable sustainability commission meeting, he is in favor of a full-on ban on county land. Why can't the City of Brentwood do that? And I also want to take a moment to say, last night, the California State Senate passed Senate Bill eleven seventy-three divesting the pensions of all of our city workers and early public employee in California away from fossil fuel companies. That is assigned tonight to ban oil and gas drilling. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alexi Lindeman. Alexi, go ahead.
Um, hello, I'm Alexi, also from Heritage High School and a friend of Ian, I'm sure you're all familiar. And I'd like to thank you for unanimously supporting the ban on oil and gas drilling on previous meetings, and placing this moratorium on drilling. And I urge you to do whatever it takes to get this ban done. And I urge you to do whatever it takes to get this ban done as soon as possible, whether it's extending the moratorium or even better um, getting that banned before, with, without the extension and getting it sooner than the 10 months. Um, we're all in agreement. Let's not wait any longer. And um, do what you can. So I, I think that's all I have to say. We're pretty much on the same page here. So thank you.
I have no additional speakers with their hands raised.
This time we will close public comments and we will.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, as this is a public hearing, if we could have a vote to, a motion to vote to close the uh, public hearing?
Yes, that, that was line 13 coming up.
I'll make a motion to close public, the public hearing.
Second.
First and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you. And now if there is any council discussion, council member Meyer, I'm Mendoza.
That's all right. Um, I just want to, what Ian was talking about is the county is actually going over their general plan. And one of the aspects of their general plan is will they, um, what will they do with oil and gas? And the uh, suggestion from the planning commission was to do the 3200 foot setback. Um, I think they were just afraid of certain things, but when it got to the sustainability committee, their actually recommendation to the board of supervisors will be a full and out ban of oil and gas. And that was um, on behalf of Supervisor Federal Glover and John Goya. So um, this, I think this is the way our, the Bay Area is going. I think we're going to see more and more of this. And I'm very happy that we're one of the cities that is um, leading the charge on minimizing greenhouse gases.
Councilmember Rary?
And I agree. I mean, we should really be looking at a full on ban on this, not just the, the, the 3,000 plus from, from a residential area or sensitive areas. You know, the health damages to residents within our community is huge. Uh, if we allow any, any drilling to take place then or around it, I'm happy to hear that, that the, the county is moving forward with it as well.
Okay, be further discussion on this item or do I have a motion?
I will make a motion as detailed in the staff report, adopt an urgency ordinance extending a moratorium on new oil and gas development in the city of Brentwood.
Second.
Okay, Margaret?
I'll read the ordinance title first, an urgency, urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Brentwood extending for an additional period of 10 months and 15 days a moratorium on new oil and gas development in the city of Brentwood pending a study of the health and safety effects of such activities in the city's long-term plan for regulation. And the roll call vote, council member Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
We will move into item B three. Uh, it pertains to the adoption of the 2019 California Fire Code. And Alexis Morse will present on the item. Alexis?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As the council is aware, the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District will be consolidated with the Contra Costa County Fire Protection District effective July 1. Due to the consolidation, the city must adopt Contra Costa Fire's code so that it may provide services to the city of Brentwood and utilize its authority in the fire code. The proposed urgency ordinance before you this afternoon adopts by reference the 2019 California Fire Code with amendments that have been adopted by Contra Costa Fire. On May 10th, the council introduced and waived the first reading of the ordinance and then set a public hearing date for May 24. The May 24th meeting was adjourned to today, but the ordinance in the public hearing was not continued to a date certain. Because it was not continued to a date certain, scheduling the second reading for the next available council meeting would not allow the ordinance to take effect by the July 1st deadline. Therefore, staff is proposing tonight an urgency ordinance to bridge the gap between July 1st and when the regular ordinance could take effect. So the interim urgency ordinance would be followed by a regular ordinance on the regular June 14th city council meeting as part of a two-track approval process. And if that ordinance were adopted, the regular ordinance would likely take effect by mid-July. The content of the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance are essentially the same with a few uh, different recitals based on the hearing dates. Um, and that is the conclusion of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of staff regarding this item? Okay, and at this time we'll open public comments. Margaret?
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And I'm seeing no hands raised.
Okay, at this time we will close public comments. Now, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
A first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez? Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, I.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, at this time, is there any further council discussion regarding this item?
Okay. I'll make a motion as detailed in the staff report, adopt an urgency ordinance to adopt by reference the 2019 edition of the California Fire Code instead of public hearing on June 14th, 2022.
Second.
First and a second, Margaret?
So I, um, give me just a moment. I need to pull up the actual ordinance to read. I have the one from the last meeting in front of me. My apologies. Just a second. An interim urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Brentwood amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.06 of the Brentwood Municipal Code to adopt by reference the California Fire Code, California Code of Regulations Title 24, Part 9, as amended by the County of Contra Costa and the Crockett Parkina's Fire Protection District and the Contra Costa County Fire Protection, Protection District Ordinance 2019-37, including findings supporting amendments to the 2019 California Building Standard Code, Title 24, Part 9 of the California Fire Code and setting the public hearing date for June 14th, 2022. And I'll go ahead and do the roll call vote now. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, we will move into item C1, which pertains to the construction of duets, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes to satisfy the city's affordable housing obligation. And Sylvia Elias will present on this item. Sylvia?
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, by, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. At the April 26, 2022 city council meeting, the council directed staff to amend the affordable housing ordinance. At the same meeting, the city council briefly discussed the construction of duet units for the city's affordable housing program. The city council discussed the possible removal of the option to construct duet units and only allow single-family units on separate lots for the program. The current ordinance allows the construction of duets, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes for the program. Tonight's staff will provide a brief uh, presentation on these types of units in the city's program. And at the conclusion of the presentation, staff will ask the city council for direction to whether amend the ordinance to eliminate the option to construct these types of units for the affordable housing program or otherwise. Currently, the ordinance allows for the construction of duets for very low to medium density zoning as a means to provide a massing in lock proportions consistent with residential development. As a flexible design standard, the current ordinance will also allows the modification of city standards and design guidelines for affordable units to include the construction of duets, duplexes, triplexes or fourplexes. The ordinance states the option in two different sections for two different purposes. A by right duet development where the affordable housing ordinance allows developers to opt to build duets to satisfy their affordable housing obligation in very low to medium density zoning districts. And the discretionary development of duets, duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes on corner lots only. Or separately in all zoning districts with single-family areas, the ordinance allows the planning commission or city council to choose whether to modify city standards and design guidelines for affordable units. Types of units in the city's affordable housing program are single-family units on separate lots, town homes, duet units and a fourplex. A total of 29 duet units, 13 ownership and 16 rental units have been constructed for the program. And one fourplex for rental has also been constructed. The next slides are examples of duet and fourplex units or fourplex unit constructed in the city's program for ownership and rental. So these are the ownership units. The rental uh, duet units. And the fourplex rental units. This concludes the presentation. Staff would like to ask the council's direction on amending the ordinance to eliminate the option to construct duet, duplexes, triplexes or fourplexes for the affordable housing program.
This time, are there any questions of staff regarding this item? Councilmember Rary?
Um, Sylvia, can we um, in the ordinance, can we like with the duplex? Um, can we have it so that the driveways are actually and, and entrances or at least the driveways are on opposite sides of a corner so that these are corner lots and um, you know, we, because as we saw in the picture, it, it really makes a difference. I mean, they look like they're two different houses or or actually as you're driving down the street, it makes it look like it's one huge house, not uh, where, no, there was a different one.
There's um, the rental duet that's on the corner, um, it's actually um, uh, the, the only rental units and we have just a couple of them um, actually are side by side. But most of them are on corner lots and um, the entrances are on opposite sides of the street or the corner.
Yeah, the um, because like the, the last one that we did in, I think it's called, was it Orchard Trails or Walnut?
Oh, yes.
That, it had both of the garages on the front while the entrances, one entrance was on one side and the other one was on another street. It's still, you know, a, and it was something that the um, city manager had showed during our one-on-ones where it showed the, the garage on one side of the corner and, and then the other garage. So that's why I, I was thinking it was in, in our group.
Yeah, I think I'll go ahead and ask um, either Alexis to chime in on um, the design guidelines and what can be done um, you know, at the planning stage.
Yes, thank you Sylvia. Um, so again, the, the provision for duet units is in two parts of the ordinance. So the, the second part specifies, the one where council has more discretion over the application of them, specifies it can only be on corner lots. So in that instance, we could do the site plan where the driveways and it's only logical that the front doors and the driveways would face the different streets. The first section is where it is uh, the by right option to build duets and that is really the developer proposing them as part of their overall project plan. The code says it may, they may be on corner lots, but it doesn't say only or have to be. And so I would, I would also want Katie to chime in here, but without objective standards that we've adopted that uh, specify how those should be applied on corner lots or on side-by-side lots. Um, we may have to update standards in order to ensure that in that, under that provision, that they are on separate street entrances. So that doesn't exist in the code today and we would have to take a close look and see if we could apply that provision to that section of the code.
Okay, um, and if, if the city manager has the picture of, of that so that so the rest of the council, if they don't remember, um, can be refreshed on, on that um, picture of one drive.
It's on page 16 in the agenda and I could share my screen if, if I can.
That would be great so that the public can see it as well.
Okay, so this is page 1216 of, I think the one you're referencing on a corner.
Yes. So it, it kind of makes it look like it's one big house. Where when you got two driveways sit or, yeah, two driveways and garage doors side by side, then, then it really does look like uh, duplexes where this makes it look like it's one big house.
So we can, so we can certainly look into that for the second provision. We have to be careful um, if we make modifications to that by right section that we um, don't tread into areas that might reduce the feasibility or the increased new setback requirements per other state laws. Um, but if, if that's council direction, we can certainly see what we can do there.
Okay, thank you. Cause yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll talk about the rest during discussion.
Councilmember Meyer?
You've sort of answered my question, but I, I think deeper into what discretion we will have if projects come before us that are, that are, we, we don't like to design of when it comes to a duet, et cetera, et cetera. As the corner lots thing.
So it somewhat depends on how it is proposed to this, to the council, right? So um, if it is, if they are asking for exceptions or Sylvia, maybe you can put up the slide with the, well, I, I actually the code language isn't in the slide. I apologize. I'm sorry to distract. It's in the staff report, the excerpt from the municipal code. Uh, but it might help to see the language, so um, give me a moment and I can probably share that. But the uh, second provision of the code, which specifies it can only be on corner lots, gives council or planning commission discretion because it is a proposal asking for concessions from our normal standards and that does not have to be granted. Okay, and so if it comes to the uh, council through that kind of request, then yes, you have discretion over um, whether even to allow duets or not, or to uh, situate them slightly differently. Um, but again, that's only corner lots for that section of the code, triplexes, duplexes, fourplexes. The, where we don't have as much discretion is the provision we created for the code that says a developer has the right to propose duets to meet their affordable housing obligation. It says it can be as small as 16, yes, 1600 square feet and then lots as small as 3,000 square feet. So the, the code gives them that option. So if they pursue that in order to meet their, what will become a 13% obligation and it comes to us under that provision of the code, we have little to no discretion over saying, unless we modify the code, under the current language, we can't say duets cannot be used to satisfy your affordable housing obligation because our code today says it can't. And then modifying that standard going forward, we have to look very carefully at introducing new setback or other requirements.
Okay, um, and regarding our own affordable housing goals, um, can you describe how the, what the impact would be whether? can you describe how the, what the impact would be whether we decide to do this or not? As far as whether, you know, our ability to meet those numbers?
So in theory, it should not affect our numeric goals, right? Because we're changing the plotting or the layout of units on a site, right? The numeric obligation still exists under the code. The only way it could possibly theoretically affect our number counts is if we impose restrictions that make it infusable for a project to produce the units we require them to produce under the code. Okay, there are some site design or constraint that is written on paper that does not allow them to produce an affordable unit that we require. I don't know that that would happen. These that would be an extreme example. So it should not impact our numeric ability to meet our requirements.
How to ask this appropriately? Would that be a bargaining tool a developer could consider to get the design that is most beneficial to them?
So the, the way the first provision in our code is written, the power is really with the developer and the applicant. We've given a pretty broad description of what is allowed. And so they really have the ability to avail themselves of those provisions, duets, 3,000 square foot lots, not on a corner lot under that section. In general, most housing laws, state laws, affordable housing laws, density bonus laws air on being deferential to the developer.
And that brings me to my last question for now, and that is how this would be impacted by density bonus laws in SB 9, for example?
So those are all above and beyond and separate from our affordable housing requirement. So they exist, our affordable housing requirements, which we discussed a bit in a previous agenda item related to this could trigger state density bonus requirements. And those are separate and added to our ordinance requirements. SB 9 is a separate process. Any property owner, once a house is built in a residential zone, could avail themselves of SB 9 or once a lot is created. Whether or not it's a part of our affordable program, our affordable program does not exempt units from SB 9. They could still participate.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you. I think you're talking about the ordinance that you're saying that's more difficult to change. Is that the .003 one?
Yeah, and if you wouldn't mind, give me one second. I can call it up if that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think this format will work. I don't have it in a PDF. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So the number one in the staff report characterizes by right duet development is the provision I was mentioning. That has, that is more, that gives council less discretion.
I guess my question is, if it's our ordinance, can't we just update the ordinance? Like, why do we can't? If we gave ourselves a discretion at some point, not us, but a council, why can't we just change it?
That is an excellent question. SB 330 and the Housing Accountability Act have put pretty tight constraints on what previously was under the discretion of local councils, right? Housing policy and regulations. So it's not that we can't, it's that there are other state laws that take, that come into play when we're deciding to change standards that affect the feasibility of the construction of housing, if that makes sense.
Okay, and this is only duets. So with this one, they cannot build triplexes, fourplexes?
Correct. This specifically gives them the option to build duets on up down to 3,000 square foot lots.
3,000 per unit or 3,000 for the two?
Per unit. So they'd be on two separate 3,000 square foot lots.
Then it would be a total of a 6,000 square foot lot for the duet. Okay.
Correct.
I know you said there's, there's, it's kind of the math, right? How does the math pan out? Is there any way you can come to us with the math that best pans out? So we're not breaking any 330 rules? Like, how far can we take it to keep our neighborhoods zoned, like everything built zoned closest to what it was zoned for? Is that an exercise you would have to go through or is that something that you have to do with each project?
Well, so the SB 330 doesn't necessarily restrict the numbers. So there is a down zoning provision, but here we're talking about development standards, right? So SB 330 is talking about the introduction of new setback requirements or other regulations that could curtail the feasibility of housing construction. So it's not necessarily a numeric thing we could bring to you. We could bring you sample site plans of how it might affect a layout, for example, of, you know, going from a duet to two detached, single-family units. If that answers your question, it's not really a numbers issue, I guess.
So if you took two lot, I mean, I would, I'm not saying I would want this, but if you took two lots and made them 3,000 and put two single-family 1600 homes, that would fulfill the requirements of the ordinance .003, right?
It could, yes. So there's nothing in this ordinance that says you have to build duets at this size, right? It says you can't.
So could we write it as, and I'm not sure if this is my, I guess it's my question, not just discussing it, but so could we write it saying two single 3,000 square foot lots, 1600? Then when they design it, the design comes back. If they want to design a duet option, then we have the option to say, we don't like that. Stick to the single, single. Or you know what? That like, you know, like Councilmember Rare was saying, I like that design. I like the way it faces each street. That works for us.
So we could possibly rewrite this to make it more clear that duets is the last option, for example, or the least desirable option. There's just, there, there is language in state law that introducing new setback standards could be problematic. But that we would have to look at carefully.
Because they're butted up against each other.
Correct. So if they're attached now and we allow that and we make a change that says attached is no longer allowed, they have to be detached, that by nature creates a new setback requirement, right? A zero setback is what's allowed under a duet today. If we change it and say they have to be detached, you're looking at a minimum four to five foot setback between each home and the property line. That's a new setback.
So then we would have to come up with a plan that's still a zero setback, but would would make it look a little nicer than the two driveways going in. Can a city, and I know Alamo does this for their SB 9 units, they have a menu of layouts that the city has approved for their SB 9s. So could we come out with like, you know, the Sears catalog kind of thing like this? These are the three options and some people remember this, you can order your home from Sears catalog. I mean, I wasn't around, but I know about it. So you can, like here are your three options and they fulfill all of our setbacks, but the actual structure is what we like best and then the exterior could be made to match the other homes?
Possibly. And so that's, that's veering into objective design standards, which the law encourages, which I would bring forward to the city in a couple of months to consider moving forward with getting objective design standards citywide. And Katie may want to weigh in this as well. There she is.
Hello, Katie. Your but your mute's not on the thingy, but we can't hear you. Not really. A little bit better. Oh, that's better.
Okay, I will use my loudest indoor voice. Alexis has described everything perfectly and I have no, no clarifications of what she has said. But to amplify that, I would just say that a key difference between the amendments that you're proposing or exploring and what Alamo has done is that with SB 330, we have to be mindful of the laws that we had in place as of January 1, 2018, right? And so the language that you're looking at right now, this .003 is what was in place on January 1, 2018. And so we're using this as our starting point and that is what the state would use as our starting point for determining whether any amendments presented in SB 330 issue. So that's why we're trying to tread very carefully and and make sure that you're all aware of the implications of your direction for us.
But if we keep like, I mean, if I were to check the list, right? Check the list, this duets are okay, zero lot, you know, 1600 square feet, 3,000, like those are the measurables in here. If we stick, stick with things that are measurable and come up with city sanctioned design, that doesn't take away anything that existed in this ordinance.
We don't know what your city design standards would be yet and we would need to test those to see if they did somehow reduce the development capacity because that's really what SB 330 is looking at, right? Whether all of the parts of your ordinance, not just the setback, but the height limit and the open space requirements and the required length of the driveway, all of those things come together to form an envelope and we would need to be sure that whatever you're proposing doesn't reduce that envelope. And that's what we're, that's what we're trying to look out for here. Thank you.
Councilmember Rare?
Well, that was kind of what I wanted to find out is what, what's, what do the lawyers have to say about it? It just, it, that, that's what it boils down to with these new housing laws is what, what we really legally can do. And so I got more for discussion, so I won't continue that. And I'll put my hand down.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I'm just trying to, you know, a lot of information, right? Everybody's asking some really good questions, but in regards to a, a single-family home and then a duet, I guess. Would a single-family home, if we didn't, will we get more far out of it if we did a duplex in comparison to a single-family home? And if we did a duplex, I mean, a single-family home, would it cause more density within, within the, for the developer to be able to have the right to create more density within the development? I don't know if I asked that question correctly.
I think I understand the, there is a difference between a single-family home and a duet typically in the lot sizes and the density. The Affordable Housing Ordinance specifically says that duets are an option to incentivize the production of affordable housing. Meaning if you can get a smaller home on a smaller lot, you may be more willing as a developer or it may be more palatable to provide the affordable housing because you can get more units in theoretically the same size lot as one home. You could get two, right? So the ordinance is crafted with the philosophy that allowing duplex, triplexes, fourplexes would incentivize more affordable housing on-site. The example that Councilmember Mendoza gave of two 3,000 square foot lots with two units might take up the same space as one single-family home on one 6,000 square foot lot. So that's why the ordinance was written the way it was, if that answers your question.
So we might be able to get more affordable housing within a development if we went with the duets and the setbacks would still be the same?
Possibly, yes. It's just, it's just geometry, right? If you, if we allow lots is down to, down to a small 3,000 square feet, we're only allowing that in the instance of a duet. Not for your, and, and an affordable unit, not just for any old single-family home in the development. We're only giving that concession isn't the right word, but that option for an affordable unit.
All right, thank you.
And then Johnny, like advanced, and so the Orchard Trails that we just approved?
Yeah.
For, I think, 18 and 1900, three and four-bedroom homes, two-story homes. So those were huge homes. I mean, a lot of people.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further clarifying questions of staff, at this time, we'll open public comment. To you, Margaret.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and I meet you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do see two hands raised. Let me go ahead and share the speaker screen. I'll start with Rod, followed by Danny Dorman. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. So I'm just kind of listening along and I have to apologize. I haven't read the agenda packet on this item. And so I just have a couple of general comments. One is that I don't have any particular problem with duplexes, but I am a no-rezone-er. And so I do have a problem with reduced lot sizes and increasing density. So if I, if I was going to craft something like this, I would want to say that you can put two duets, but the lot size should equal the minimum lot size in the zoning times two. So each unit should get the minimum lot size. I, I'll go with the minimum lot size, but I don't think we should be cramming two duets on some, on something that's smaller than the, the minimum lot size for each unit. Because then you have more units and I, I hear Councilmember Rodriguez or actually Vice Mayor Rodriguez saying, well, yeah, we can get more affordable housing. But I don't think increasing density is the way to do that. And so that, that is my primary concern is that we don't increase the density, that it's not a rezone. It is something that allows them to build a structure less expensively because there's a shared wall. Yeah, my other comment is that anytime I hear by right, again, being a no-rezone-er, it just kind of makes my skin crawl. I hate that phrase. Because if you give the developer a right to do anything, you can be sure they're going to do it. And I want the city to be able to keep control within the boundaries set by the state to fully review a design. So I think the design of these things should be such that a person wouldn't feel stigmatized living there and would have the same pride of ownership or pride of residence that anybody would have. So it needs to be something that we can be proud of. And I, I don't think that the, the current, from what I'm understanding of the current ordinance is allowing people to, to downsize lots for these duets and I'm not into that at all. I remember discussion last time about people, you know, not being able to afford a full-size lawn and whatnot. And I, that's just, doesn't fly with me. I, when I was little, I lived in a duet and, or duplex and my dad mowed the lawn and took care of the property, just like it was his own because that's what people do. So I don't think people necessarily need a smaller lot just because they have less resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Oh, boy. Thank you. All right. I'm sitting here and I'm listening and I'm wondering, is this an exercise in futility? Or just something where, you know, for those who run for office and say, hey, and the reason I say that and I look at Orchard as an example, when they came back with the revised drawing, the duplex was smaller. It looked less attractive. These folks would do everything they can to make it cheap. So I'm not overly concerned about how many driveways and where the driveways are on the corner. I'm wondering how we could put all the ordinances in the world and then they come back and say exemption. That, as it was pointed out, this is already developer-friendly. And so I go back to, is this an exercise in futility? It does sound like it. And I hate to be the guy that says that. I really wish you guys had teeth. I heard, I think it was Councilwoman Mendoza who mentioned Alamo. And I, if there's anything that we could take best practices from, oh, God in heaven, let's do that. But the example of having a duplex on 6,000 square feet or, you know, one half on 3,000, the other half on 3,000, I refer back to Orchard. They made the duplex, excuse me, the duplex obviously smaller. It looked, if you look at the map, it, it looks like it's about two-thirds of the size of a home that, homes that were on either side of it. So this whole thing about, you know, So this whole thing about, you know, I'm not worried about the developers deciding where they're going to put a, a driveway. I'm more concerned of how cheap are they going to make the homes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes? That's my concern is simply that. How cheap are they going to make it? And if we are going to be able to put some teeth in this, that's great. But if we're using the good old high density and get more bang for our buck and whatever else Vice Mayor Rodriguez said to try and assage his constituents. Baloney, baloney, baloney. If we want to hold the line on high density, then we need to use common sense. And common sense is, as was pointing out, geometry. And if that means fighting, holding the line because of fire, um, support or lack thereof, uh, water, we're getting ready to go into a drought and what are we trying?
Speaker's timer, it expired. I'll call on the next speaker, Gary. Gary, go ahead. Gary, you'll need to unmute.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Yes, I would actually take a different perspective on this. I believe that because of our need to develop more affordable housing, we're going to need to increase density, we're going to need to rezone. One of the tragedies I see in a lot of areas is we have these very massive homes. I've had a large home in the past, but it's no longer appropriate for me. I need a smaller home. And here in Brentwood, I was able to find a smaller home. For a number of people, they need to have a more wider choice of homes. So many developers now, from the economic perspective, are developing what the maximum building they can on a lot that is, in the past would not have been acceptable. We need to have single story homes. We need to have two story homes. I think we need to have all the different variety of homes. That doesn't mean we should accept lower appearance standards or things like that. I think we can develop communities that have homes of different sizes, different configurations. And I think people can be proud of their home, whether it's large or small. As long as they take care of it, I think that's the key. And, and I think people will take pride in their homes. But I do think that because of the needs that we have as a society, we need to have a variety of homes available at a variety of prices. And I think it's important to include everybody in these communities so that everybody feels a part of the community. And they may live in a duet, they may live in a, a four thousand square foot house. But I think it's important that we give everybody the opportunity to have decent housing at a price they can afford. So that's all I wanted to add here is that we need as a society to face the fact that we have problems. And I think I have confidence in this city council that you will make appropriate decisions for the community. But decisions that are inclusive of people at all income levels who have all kinds of housing needs. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
At this time, the public comment moves into council discussion. Councilmember Mendoza.
I would like to um, work, uh, find, like Councilmember Rary said, find a way so they're more visually appealing because I understand the zero foot setback, so we're going to have duets. But I think, I don't think, and I mean, I don't know, you all might have been, but I wasn't happy with the entryways on the last ones we got from Shea Homes. They were awful. I mean, the front of the, the front of the regular house has like substantial entryways. And the ones, um, it was walnut villas, um, it just didn't look great. And to her credit, Councilmember Rary tried really hard to make sure it looked as nice as possible. But I do think that we should look at just, I don't know if we follow the Alamo model. Will we have the standard, like these are your standards, you know, your sixteen hundred square foot units and the builder can pick from that and then their exterior matches. But I think that's, I mean, then they wouldn't have to worry about designing it. It's already done, right? That saves them some cost. But if we could figure something like that out, I would be much happier.
Councilmember Rary.
Yeah, I, I just pulled up um, Orchard Trails and they're both around two thousand square feet. Um, the both duplexes, one was a little under like nineteen seventy-two and the other one was two thousand something. So those are pretty large. You know, and, and I've actually lived in two duets. Um, I've lived in one town home. And all of the ones that I lived in, well, one of the duets, I think all of those were rentals in that area. But um, the second one I lived in, I mean, that, my next door neighbor owned it and his kids lived in the unit next to them. So he had the owner unit. Um, because that was how they, they had them. They had the, the two car garage was the bigger unit and the one car garage was the smaller unit. So there was a lot of owners in that area that they rented out the second part. So I, 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 I had no problem living in those things. And, and you know, we were actually kind of appreciative of the smaller yards because of working. And you know, it, it made it easier to take care of the smaller yards. Um, even now, I'm, I'm wishing I had a smaller, smaller yards than what I have. Uh, my mom out in um, Somerset, she bought a duet. She had the choice of what type of house that she wanted. She chose the duet, which was a, a two bedroom, uh, two bath duet with uh, I, I think it was like twelve hundred square feet. For her, that was large enough. Um, I don't think, I, I think putting the minimum there is good. The sixteen hundred on a three thousand foot is, is necessary. I don't think setting standards in that is good because look, we just got almost two thousand square foot lot, uh, homes for, for two different affordable homes. And depending on what um, what area these houses are going to be built on, um, we've been maybe seeing larger, um, or not larger, but as large of that in, in other places. Other inclusionary housing. So I, I think it is something that if we're able to change how the, the houses are situated, I think that's the best thing that we can do um, as far as by right for, for the residents who are listening. A lot of our property or a lot of our zoning already has by right in it so that they can build X amount of things on that land by right. So it's something that we, we currently have in all of our zoning. Um, and then there's conditional use, uses. And so those are things that they have to go in and, and go to the planning unit or the planning department and planning commission to get approval of. So there, there's both of those, by right and, and conditional use. So I, I don't have a problem with the by right. Do I want to, would I like to get rid of it? Yeah, I would, but um, that's, that's up to the attorneys to see if we can legally do that. And I, I think I'm going to leave that up to the attorneys to, to, to find out the most that we can do. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. Um, and I would agree. Uh, I, I think our, our design standards are as, as much as we can really push for, at least at this moment. Um, I am concerned about having a set um, menu, even though I love the idea, based on them potentially choosing something that doesn't match the rest of the neighborhood and then the house stands out anyway. I, I mean, I would hope they wouldn't do that, but who, who knows? Um, and I think that I totally agree with the caller that said we need to have a, a, a variety of options available for all incomes and needs and the, and the people that are uh, becoming empty nesters, for example, uh, might not want that huge house anymore, but might still want to live in our wonderful city. And so I, I see the need for that. Um, I'm always about, you know, under, trying to understand and trying to work with what the state is mandating for us and when it comes to density and, and not down zoning and the rest of it. But also pushing to the extent that we can without raising red flags or doing something that could cause problems down the line. So I, I definitely support the idea of, of getting as restrictive as, as we can with what other our design standards are. And then the last thing is I totally agree with the idea of having a, a focus on a really nice entrance. I think that it's, it's the face of the house. It's what people first notice. And I think um, beyond the, the idea of making sure that the front is set up the way Councilmember Rary was discussing, the, the front doors um, that, that speaks to anybody coming to visit, that speaks to people walking in the door after work or after school. It just feels to me like that should be something that we set pretty high. I was happy to see that we pushed as hard as we did, thanks to Councilmember Rary on the Orchard Villas, Walnut Villas, excuse me. Um, but I, but I do agree with uh, Councilmember Mendoza on the, on the front facing parts of it as well. I think that's, that's just something we really need to um, for the sake of this pride and ownership or residency, uh, we need to help our residents out with that one, giving them as many options as we can uh, within our guidelines and standards. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, Alexis, I have one quick question. The by right, they just get that. When do they exercise the other one, the one where we have more discretion? What's the difference?
So the difference is if they're asking for concessions or um, if I can um, call up that whole section of the code, is, is okay if I share my screen?
Well, okay. But like for, I or, I mean, the one that's coming to us soon, is that one a by right or is that one the discretionary?
I honestly, I'm not sure because there's density bonus and one under the program. So there's really only one under the program. And Katie, yes, we'll, we'll.
I guess I, just so that I understand, like when an application comes up for us, how do we know? Do you put it in the staff report that they're exercising this ordinance or they're?
Yes, yes. Yeah. And again, so when a project comes to us with affordable housing, I often think of it as a package. There's a couple different pa- there's a package they're putting together usually for larger developments, right? Um, so they're proposing uh, to meet our ordinance units at this affordability. They're proposing some as duets, using some as duets on corner lots there. Um, so it's all analyzed in the staff report and it's different project by project, okay? And so this is the code, relevant code section um, about the more discretionary option. And so this has an introduction about how that works. So this is up to the developer to say they need some flexibility and they would like some, and can everyone see this, okay? They would like some concessions from the city um, with a lowercase c. This is not a density bonus concession. Um, but under our ordinance, they are asking for some concessions in order to increase the feasibility of the affordable product. And again, there's a whole menu here. Within that menu is these options where the duets, duplexes, triplexes come into play. So reduced lot sizes are in there, reduced setback. And this does not have to be granted. This is a request and they have to prove that it's necessary to provide the affordable housing that our ordinance requires.
Okay, I have one quick question. Let's go back in time to the walnut villas. Could we have asked for a different entrance for it to have been more substantial?
And I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the life cycle of what we did or I'm familiar with where we ended up. Uh, so possibly, yes. And so I'm sorry to scroll quickly, but there is another provision in the code. Let me find it. I had it just a second ago. I'm sorry, I had it up before we moved to the, okay. So there is this provision. It sounds like uh, we may have fallen short on the walnut villas project uh, on the elevations, but there is this provision that they are um, commence, commensurate with the single family homes. Do I have the right section up? The number at, letter F right here.
So it says comparable to, okay. So going forward, any development that comes before us, we can say, look at the pillars on your other homes. You don't have anything like that here, like those need to match.
That's in the ordinance today, yes.
Well, well, that and, and the, the front of, or on the side of the house entered, there was the air conditioning unit and the electrical box sitting right there by the front door. So I, you know, and afterward, I was thinking we should have had a little lease.
Put it behind the fence or?
Somehow so that it wasn't seen. Yeah.
And the, the only thing I would chime in to add here is that, yes, we do have this language under section F. But we have to be mindful of our requirement that we hold developers to objective criteria, right? And so this does talk about comparable design, quality, materials, architectural elements and overall construction quality. But we have to be thinking about what is objective and what is subjective. And I won't belabor the point, but I, I think you see where I'm going with this. So it's something else to keep in mind as you consider this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for tonight, can, I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels, but can we ask staff to just go look at the feasibility of asking for the entrances each facing opposite streets if they're on a corner? And that the design entrances match the overall neighborhood as much as possible? Like, can we put that? I don't know how you all feel about that. Because we know we can't give her the zero setback, which is what originally I was thinking, like, can we have separate? But we can't because of SB three thirty. So I don't know how, Mayor, you feel about it or anyone else.
No, I, I'd like to, to keep it with as much because it, it's supposed to look like the rest of the neighborhood. That's what the um, inclusionary housing is. It's just smaller unit um, with, without all the upgrades on the inside. But it's supposed to look like the rest of the neighborhood. Um, so, yeah, uh, it's whatever we can do to, to really narrow down on it um, and, and to see if there's any way to get rid of the by right.
November of twenty twenty four.
Well, and, and I agree with what everyone has said tonight. Uh, I don't want to, again, belabor what has been said, but I totally agree. I think that uh, if, if we cannot uh, demand certain things, it would be really nice if we could strongly, strongly encourage as much as possible from staff standpoint. Um, and, and again, like has been said, uh, do as much as we can legally uh, to make all of the homes blend in. Uh, and, and I personally very much agree with Councilmember Rary. Uh, I, the, there, it's such an obvious difference in the photographs we were shown tonight of, of the difference between having a driveway side by side and one on each corner. I too have lived in um, well, many, many different types of housing. And, and both of these types I've lived in, in the past. So I, I agree.
Would that be a motion right there?
I, I would be happy to make the motion.
Mayor, real quick, Mayor, though, I just want to say is that I also agree with Councilmember Rary in regards to whatever we could do to make sure that these homes look like the rest of the neighborhood, the better, right? Uh, so I do agree with what Councilmember Rary said. In regards, that's real important, right? That's why we do this. That's why they're, um, they're put in those communities to look like those communities. So I just wanted to repeat that as well as that I agree with Councilmember Rary. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, um, if it would be all right for me to share my screen for a moment to show you what I understand the motion to be? And if that is not accurate, then if the motion maker could correct me, then maybe we can all be on the same page before you proceed to a vote. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, please.
Okay, give me one second here.
If we could also clarify timing because there is the ordinance updating process.
Yes. So as I understand it, you would like staff to look into the legal feasibility of removing by right development of duets in very low, low and medium density zoning districts. Um, that's the first item. The second item was determining the legal feasibility of adding a requirement that duets on corner lots have garages on separate streets. The second item was determining the legal feasibility of adding a requirement that duets on corner lots have garages on separate streets. And that would only be in the context of those by right duets in section zero, zero, three. Because as Alexis pointed out, for the duets duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes, the city has more discretion over those. So that's the limitation of number two. And then number three is determine the feasibility of adding strong design requirements to ensure that affordable homes blend in with market rate homes in the same subdivision. Are we accurately capturing your direction there?
Yes.
I'm seeing some nods. So then the next question as to Alexis's point is that staff is currently working on an ordinance to bring to the planning commission and then the city council that will capture the affordable housing obligation increase from ten percent to thirteen percent. And those other items that we previously discussed. Is it council's direction that staff should do this work behind the scenes and wrap that into the ordinance that we're bringing forward to planning commission and keep that train moving along? Or do you want to see the answers to these questions prior to that ordinance moving forward? Alexis, I don't know if that's what you had in mind, so please feel free to correct me if you are getting at something different.
I don't want to wait to pick thirteen because you never know what applications can come into place, right? You get thirteen as fast as you can and then this.
That would be my recommendation is we move that forward and then we can come back with additional information on this and update the ordinance again.
Yeah.
That, not that, that will be my motion. Said Alexis, I could not have said it as well. Thank you. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Hi.
Mayor Bryant.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous.
We will move into item C two. It pertains to council sponsored ballot initiative to protect open space and recreational area, areas. And Darren Gale, uh, our assistant city manager will present on the item. Darren.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. Let me go ahead and pull up my PowerPoint. Are you seeing the PowerPoint?
We are, it just got a lot smaller than it was earlier.
We'll try one last time. Is it? Can you see their mayor now?
I, I can see it, but it's very small. I, I do know that, uh, we have some PowerPoint Zoom experts on council that often know how to, how to help anybody that would like to.
One last time. Still not?
No.
I myself go to the top where it says slideshow. I hit slideshow and.
Perfect.
But, but you're, yeah, you'll need to go to full screen.
We're, uh, we're good. So, uh, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for the time, uh, this evening. Um, at your, uh, council meeting on April twenty second, sorry, April twenty sixth, you directed staff to move forward with, uh, um, option two and three. And in, in that, uh, meeting, we discussed that we'd be back before you this month to give you an update. Uh, based on analysis by, uh, our outside legal counsel and planning. Uh, we are recommending that, uh, we continue to move forward with option three. Um, with option two, with locking in the current general plan designation as, uh, semi-public, uh, facilities. Uh, we believe that there could be some unintended consequences of the lock, uh, due to the current zoning and general plan designations, that it would not protect the two closed golf courses for just golf or open space. And that it would allow other type of developments specifically in the general plan. Uh, it discusses daycares and religious, uh, facilities. Um, as a result, we're recommending to move forward just with option number three, uh, which is an overlay. Yeah, which is very similar to, uh, what Martinez, uh, uh, created. Um, the, the next step, if the council recommends continuing to move forward just with option three, we will be back before you at the, at the June fourteenth city council meeting with draft language and a map. And we will have an extensive discussion about which properties should or should not be included as part of the overlay. Uh, so at this time I can answer any questions that you might have, uh, for our recommendation.
Are there any clarifying questions to staff or? Councilmember Rary.
Um, so how does the, the golf courses fit into this? And, and why aren't we including Brentwood Golf Course? I, I saw uh, the language for Deer Ridge and for Shadow Lakes, but Brentwood Golf Course should also be included in that. At one point they talked about closing down the nine holes on the Somerset one side.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Rary for the question. Uh, we can come back with additional information at, at the next meeting where we will have a map showing which properties, uh, to be included. Uh, that being said, that, uh, the Brentwood Golf Course has different zoning, which could cause, uh, issues related to getting on the November ballot. If, if, if we had additional time, we can include all these properties, but the plan.
I thought they were all semi-public facilities.
Uh, they, uh, so there's the underlying zoning is, uh, a different, uh, planned development, which has a different, uh, requirements. Catherine might be able to explain a, a little bit more. And, and like I said, we will have additional information at the next meeting explaining which, uh, uh, properties fit within the criteria to meet the November, uh, guidelines.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Darren. I'm happy to chime in and to clarify, yes. Um, they, we are looking at all the golf courses. Um, they all have the same general plan designation, which is this SPF, um, designation. Uh, however, the, they have, they all, and they also all have planned development zoning. But the rules, um, for each plan development are different. And so this is, this is requiring a very close inspection and tailored inspection of each, um, you know, each golf course and each area that would be proposed for the overlay. Um, and like I said, like, like Darren said, we will, we'll come back with more, uh, with more information as to each one. Um, but we're looking very closely, you know, at, at each, uh, each area and the specific zoning rules that would go, that go along with them.
And then also Councilmember Rary, uh, as I mentioned, coming before you on June fourteenth. And then we will be able to come back in July if there's any additional, uh, changes that the council wants to make on the, the June fourteenth city council meeting. And, and I believe that there'll be a robust, robust discussion about which properties, uh, should be included. And then we will be able to come back and, and make a determination of if we can include those properties that would not negatively impact our ability, uh, due to CECL requirements to make the November ballot. And then, uh, one, one additional item, Mayor, if I may, as relates to my presentation. Um, I, I do want to, uh, there, one of the goals of the council is to protect the city from future state mandates. And I just, I, I, I want to kind of maybe clear the air. There's some questions there. If there is a new state mandate, um, a ballot initiative will not protect us from a state law that tells us that we shall do something. Um, as relates, th- there's other things where we talked about last time about SB three thirty. And the city of Martinez was not required to follow that because the law was not in place at the time. Um, if it wasn't placed at the time, they would have had to follow that. But in general, it does not protect us from state mandates.
Thank you, Darren. If there are, uh, Councilmember Meyer.
Uh, thank you. Darren, I'm sorry. Can you please clarify then, does that mean Martinez would or would not have to follow the state mandate?
So Martinez does have to follow the state mandate. The, the difference was they did not have to follow SB three thirty because it was not in place at that time. The city of Antioch, when they went and their, um, ballot initiative became effective, SB three thirty was in effect and they were required to follow that. And as a result, it was considered unconstitutional and did not follow, uh, the state laws.
So future bills that are not yet in effect though, and we would still have to follow them regardless of whether they were or not?
So, uh, so yes, future bills we will have to follow. So for example, it said, you have to build up uh, additional residential housing on former golf courses. Irregardless of a, of a ballot initiative, the city council or the city would then have to, uh, um, uphold that state law.
So basically here we are protecting open space from potential future council decisions that don't reflect the needs and the wants of the residents. But we're not able to protect at all anything on the state level.
That is correct.
And I do believe there's a lawsuit right now about voter initiatives, um, that's going through the courts. I can send that to you. Because the state is looking at doing away with voter initiative protection. So we'll see where that goes.
And I, and I just, since I have a, a moment, I, I need to mention, um, I have a meeting. I was not able to reschedule. It starts at six thirty. So if this discussion is in the middle, I'm going to have to hop off at six twenty five. My apologies. I'll get back on afterwards if it's still going. Thank you.
Yeah, I also have to get off at about six fifteen. I already had some obligations as well, so um, I'll have to get off about six fifteen. Sorry about that.
Thank you both. Well, if there are no further clarifying questions, we will open public comments on this item. Margaret.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand, use the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided. And mute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do want, have one hand raised. I'll call on Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Margaret. Um, so as, as a, a member of the citizen team that, that brought this forward to the city originally. Um, our, our role in this at this point in time, um, is we're not really directly involved in the drafting of the initiative. Um, but we will be very heavily involved in the promotion of it, uh, with the public. So we, we have a concern to see the, the language, um, as soon as possible. Uh, and I understand exactly, believe me, I understand exactly why it takes so long to do these things. That I'm concerned about, um, i- if we omit a golf course, I'm concerned about. I understand, uh, the CECL requirements, but I'm not so sure the public is going to understand. It's going to look like we're just taking a, a shot at at Deer Ridge and Shadow Lakes. They're not going to understand. So I, I certainly hope that there's a way to, to include all of the golf courses. Um, and, uh, I, I hope the attorneys can continue to work on that. Other than that, option three looks to be, uh, the best option. I understand that the reasoning given for it. And I, I agree completely that option three seems to be the way to go. Again, I, I hope that we can cover as broad, um, a swath of open spaces we can find in Brentwood to, um, protect with this. Um, as far as state laws, I'm still confused why Martinez is able to um, not have to follow SB three thirty because there was, they were before SB three thirty. But we would be, have to, um, respect laws that were passed after us. So that's not really quite clear in my head. Um, but I think maybe that'll be, uh, uh, something we can discuss next time, given that everybody has to leave. And, uh, other than that, as far as, uh, not being consistent with state law, I'd like to see the law written as strength, as stringently as possible. Um, and like the Martinez law with the explicit, um, language that says that, uh, state laws, we're not trying to override any state laws so that it can be written as stringently as possible. So that when the, um, when the, uh, our neighborhood voices bill is passed with, which God willing, it'll be passed. Um, then the, the initiative will become stronger as it is. Um, and so we should look towards that rather than trying to, and also for the thing that you were just talking about with duets. We should always look forward to the time when maybe we can overturn some of these state ballots. And we want the language to revert automatically to the strongest that it can revert to. Um, and so that's something that I'd like to see in all of these bills and including this one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close public comment with the council discussion. Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, I think given what we've seen, option three is probably the best option. And, and I think it'd be better for staff to focus on one option instead of keep going back and forth. But, um, is there any risk to the August deadline, do we think? If you have just, if you're laser focused on one option?
No.
Okay, perfect. I, I, I'm would lean towards option three. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Councilmember Rary.
I, I, I also, option three.
Yeah, I know I have to get off, so I just, I also agree with Councilmember Rary and Mendoza that option three as well. So I apologize, I have to get off, but I do agree with option number three. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Should I make a motion before they leave so we can vote on this one at least with? Motion to approve the direction provided to staff. Wait, no, it's that one. Hold on. That's the wrong one. Uh, direct staff to pursue option three and bring it back to council for further action as detailed in the staff report.
We have a first and a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez. It looks like he may have left. Mayor Bryant.
Hi.
Motion carries for one.
At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The first.
Second.
Second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Rary.
Hi.
Mayor Bryant.
Hi.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor Rodriguez absent.
Thank you. Well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff.